Our amazing designers Umbra. He's been with us since, since ever with the dragons. So you guys have come to learn and I mean, learn and love his art. So thank you so much for being here Umbra. Next to Umbra, we have another one of our amazing designers. Who has been with us so long, I don't remember what it was like when they weren't. You guys, please meet Chronic Stone Edge. So thanks for joining us today Chronic. Next to Chronic, we have Mr. Lex Sherlock. He is half of our dynamic duo scripting team that we have. Lex has been with us since day, day negative one. That'll just tell you that. And then we have next to him TM. He's the other half of the dynamic scripting duo. Um, so if you guys don't know, welcome TM. Now next to TM is no one. Don't worry about her. You, you don't need to know anything about her. Um, and then there's me, oh, oh, that's the, oh, you guys, Ms. Josephine Cooperstone. She is the owner of Mystical Creatures. Um, and let me just say Josie, thanks for being here with us today. And then you have me. I am Avalon Crystal. I am the COO of Mystical Creatures. If you filed a ticket ever before, you probably talked to me about it. Um, yeah, no lunch break for me. Um, so I'm so glad. There are some people I don't know. So there are a couple of new faces. So let me just say hi to, to Psycho. To Jade, to Maddie, to Michi, to Panda, Katie, Samantha, Vicky, Raphael, Raphael, sorry. Lucky, of course, she's not new, but she's, she's in white. So Master Woo Ju, Woo Ju Woo Ju. Um, Drew and Mark. I'm just so glad that you guys found us and you're here today. Oh, and Lohan over there and Bibi Girl. Let me say, guys, just welcome. So every month Mystical Creatures has a town hall meeting. And it's just a little get together with the, the community and the team of Mystical Creatures. So we can get some feedback. We can talk to you about exciting things that are going on. Um, usually what I do is I ramble off a bunch of information and to the point where you don't want to listen anymore. And then I go, okay, your turn. What do you have to tell me? It's usually how this works. So. Uh, let's get through my announcements. So like I said, welcome all and everybody. Uh, the first thing I want to talk about and just take off the top before we even get started is the Festival of Flames. So if you did not, uh, weren't able to hear the stream or hear me earlier. Um, the face, the Festival of Flames has sadly came to an end. Um, we did over four weeks, uh, during the festival. So double AP points have gone away. There will no longer be double AP points. Um, we, now you can get some sleep. So our top 10 guys can comprised of Lennox, Lucky, Minks, Wraith, Shelley's, Verily, Jennifer, Stacy, Jibus and Lamia. Now, um, our top three, Len, Lucky and Minks. They received a Festival of Flames Gold Champion Trophy. Uh, Lucky and Minks also were awarded the right to, along with Mystical Creatures designers, make their very own mystical dragon eye. They're gonna come up with the design. They're gonna work uh, with the designers through me to get that eye made and concepted and into a dragon that they will get. And they'll be the only one on the whole grid with that eye unless they want to share it with you. So, um, yeah. Uh, Lynn actually won. He's gonna be able to choose whether he wants to do an eye, a horn pigment, a dragon pigment or a claw. So he's going to, and this is the first time we've ever offered anybody the ability to create their own horn pigment drag- dragon, I mean ornament pigment or claw. Uh, we've never offered that to anyone else before. Some of you guys, some of you even here have had the chance to make your own dragon eye, but uh, top, top grand prize, he's gonna get to choose. Now, four through 10 are winners. We're silver champions. That was Wraith, Shelley's, Verily, Jennifer, Stacy, Jibus and Lamia. Now let me just say, some of you guys well over exceeded my expectations on how many cinder shards you would be turning in. Um, and just to be totally transparent, um, you know, when we release something new, we always try to think of ways people can get loopholes, ways they can cheat or exploit or do things like that. Um, and the Festival of Flames was no different. But as soon as I was apprised of people being able to transfer their cinder shards, we put an end to that, which totally changed the festival up. So, um, and there was actually somebody who was banned from the festival all the way around, who did not receive any prizes. Um, so yeah. So when you, when you do things and you use things as they weren't intended to be used and you do it, uh, to gain, I consider that an exploit. So, uh, just so you know. Um, so everybody who participated got the Festival of Flames Bronze Champion Trophy. Anyone who turned in over 300 cinder shards. Um, now remember guys, there was lots of ways to get cinder shards. You could dig, you could battle, you could send 300 eggs to Ascension because it gave you one point each, right? Um, so there was lots of different ways for people to gain AP. As long as you had turned in, um, I'm sorry, cinder shards, as long as you had turned in cinder shards, uh, over 300 cinder shards, right? 299? No. Um, you got the chance to get that amazing legendary edition, that 2025 Festival of Flames Inferno, right? And like I was saying earlier, that's gonna be considered like an exclusive legendary edition because only those people who qualify are gonna be able to get that dragon. So that's gonna leave a lot of the community out that A, didn't know what we were doing. B, couldn't for whatever reason participate, or, or C, just was not, um, interested, right? So now, like I said earlier, the question is, do you birth it? Do you breed it? Do you sell it? Do you keep it? It's yours to do with that, whatever you want to do with it, okay? Um, and there are some stuff, uh, that is going to pass from those as well. So, um, not gonna tell you what that is, okay? Um, now, uh, the next thing I want to talk about is our last LE. Our last legendary edition dragon was the designer legendary edition contest winner. The 2025 legendary edition Pharaoh that was submitted by Minks Razor. She was the winner of that contest. So we made her dragon, brought it to life, bring, brought it into reality, as you want to say. Um, how many of you guys liked that? Um, yes, congratulations, Minks again. How many of you guys liked that? Uh, Pharaoh dragon? You have lots of them. Okay. So there was some pretty awesome stuff that had the ability to pass from those. Um, now, if you didn't see my connection yesterday, there was, uh, any breeding, any breeding, as long as, you know, one parent was that, uh, Pharaoh dragon, you could get the raw skin, the raw eye, the raw horn pigment, the raw ornament pigments. And even because it was just too awesome not to give to you guys, the Pharaoh leafage ornaments, okay? So lots of goodies hiding in those, right? I know some, some of you guys are gonna be racing to make a four times raw dragon. Um, so i- if you are, you've been seeing it or hearing the grumblings of that, um, that is where those traits come from. How many of you guys actually got one of those? Anybody get a new trait? I know some of you guys did here, so don't, don't get quiet now. You got Shelley's got the claw, Jinx got two. You have 12, but no traits? Maybe that next egg, right? I know some of you guys did. Somebody got the leafage. Well, somebody got all of them, right? Cause I wouldn't be, uh, telling you about them if they were still waiting to be discovered. All of those traits and that LE is already on the Wiki page already. Um, speaking of Wiki page, I want to talk a little bit about that. Um, how many of you guys use the Wiki? How many of you guys have no idea what I'm talking about? Alright, so that is the Wiki link, right? Um, so I have worked, um, uh, since our last town hall meeting, I really worked on getting everything that was missing on to the Wiki. So you, you were looking for the ghost pigment? So I'm gonna tell you, your best friend on this Wiki page is the search box in the top right hand corner. Um, if you see somebody in the group say, oh, I just got this new raw eye and you're like, mm, I don't know what that is. You just put it in the search box, right? And any instance of that name is going to pop up and then you can find a photograph on exactly what it looks like, right? And when I said that I went through and I, and I completely reorganized this. I, uh, organized the, the claw pigments into their different elements. And then I listed legendary edition, uh, claws that passed. So all of those things should be on there, not as a link, but as a window that opens and shows the Wiki through media. You're talking about a hut, Jinx. Okay, yeah. So guys, utilize that to your advantage. Um, let's talk just a minute about the Impossible Dreams Contest. This is going to be ending in a few days. How many of you guys are participating in the Impossible Dreams Contest? Anybody? Two, three. Alright, how many people have no idea what I'm talking about? Okay, that's okay too. Um, so here's the thing, guys. You really, 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 if you don't, if you're not in our main group, you want to be looking at our website. Um, you know, just every day when you log on second life and you're feeding your dragons or looking at your dragons or checking your eggs, look over our website because all information is always posted there. Um, we don't do anything that we haven't posted on there, posted in world, posted on our Facebooks. Like we don't come up willy nilly and say, hey, let's have a contest and let's only tell three people about it, right? That's not, that's not how we do things. We try to let everybody know. So the Impossible Dreams Contest, guys. Um, here is the link for that that is listed in our forums. So the rules are as follows. Your eggs, your egg must have dropped between December 27th and April 30th. So you guys have had several months to, uh, create whatever you wanted to create, right? And have six different traits, three different elements. And you can have the same element horn pigment and ornament pigment as long as they're not the same as coat or something like that. So this is ending on the 30th. I will be taking submissions for this on the first of April. So those of you who didn't know about this, guys, it's basically a breeding contest where if your dragon meets the qualifications, you can enter it. I will then take your dragon and I will put it, um, put it in an area so it's anonymous. So the average person just walking by wouldn't know, oh, that's Ava's dragon. I like Ava. I'll vote for her. Uh, we tried to do a blind voting. I get guest judges to come in who are, uh, content creators in second life. And then we pick, pick our winners and they get prizes and we give, um, give really cool prizes. So how do you submit? Like I said, on May 1st, I will be giving instructions on how you submit for that. So if you didn't know anything about it, you still got time, just make sure that the egg has dropped between December 27th and April 30th. And you meet the qualifications, alright? Um, I also want to say a big shout out and a big thank you to Mamuk for hosting an Easter egg hunt for you guys over the last weekend. How many guys participated in the Easter egg hunt? Did you go find you some dragons? Everybody enjoy that. Good, good, good. So Mamuk, guys, that's all, uh, that's just your average breeder who's volunteering to bring our community together, right? So if you would like to, um, be a part of Mamuk or participate in Mamuk, please contact one of their, uh, officers. Here today, I know Dre's here. I know Ash is here. Is Raiden here? I don't know that I've saw Raiden. But guys, those are just people who volunteer their time to try to make the community a better place. So, um, thank you so much to those guys. Um, I do have a big surprise coming up, but I'm gonna keep that, uh, under wraps until the end of the meeting. But, um, we're gonna talk about that. I really wanted to get some feedback from you guys. I do feel that because of the Festival of Flames, it's been a really great way to bring the community together to foster some kind of competitiveness between you guys. I'd like to know how many of you guys, for the first time ever, battled or dug with your dragon because of the Festival of Flames. And guys, if you want to talk, you can talk or you can type whatever you want. Okay. Didn't know blueprint sort of thing. Okay. You did a lot of PVE. So, um, I'm just gonna be real blunt and real honest with you guys. The team sitting before you today, we worked, I would say, a better part of a year um, to make a battling system, to make a digging system, to give you guys different things to do with your dragons, uh, besides just set them out in a nice neat row and breed them, right? So, um, how many guys do you think will continue to dig or battle now that the festival is over?
Um, I would love to battle dragons. Fact is, is that when they pass on and you've worked that hard, it's just kinda hard to let you.
So, so I am gonna be hosting a rumble next week. Uh, I believe it's on Monday. Let me check the calendar. But those of you guys who were PVEing with your dragons and you now have an awesome battle dragon, I hope that you guys will attend the, uh, rumble that I'm having. Let me just take a look here. Yeah, it's going to be Monday at 2:00 PM. Monday at 2:00 PM and I, I give prizes for that. So, um, it's a good time, right? And all kinds of people have all different kinds of dragons. And when I tell you that you don't understand the battling system probably very well, what I mean by that is there are different battle buffs that you can craft from things you found while you were digging to make your dragon stronger, faster, hit harder. Um, there are ruins you can make to give your dragons a boost and yeah, flask are your friend. There are all different kinds of things that are completely a hundred percent free to make you have an awesome battle dragon to be the biggest baddest dragon on the block. So I hope that we can take this momentum and moving forward, take it into battling, take it into what are some things you guys would like to see for digging, for blueprints, for things you can craft, all kinds of stuff like that. Now, I want to remind you guys that for the Festival of Flames, uh, people who were digging and battling and sending things to Ascension, who were getting the sender points, not only have they gotten a free LE, some of them got free food, some of them got eternity feathers, some of them got, uh, packs of charms for their dr- dr- drakes and dragonesses. And that was all for, for, it was all free, right? It was just a way that, um, we could bring the community together. And I really feel, at least the feedback I've gotten from most of you guys is, is that it was good and everybody had a great time and you'd love to do it again, but not tomorrow. Yeah, we had, uh, different events. We had uh, 10 or 12 people that paraded down the catwalk who got special little awards for that. Um, so there was lots of really cool things that went on through, throughout the entire festival. Um, now, one thing that I wanted to ask you guys directly was, um, during the festival, we made the time it takes for your dragon to get to the ability to battle each another dragon to PvP. We have that time. Um, and I wanted to get some feedback on, on you guys from that. Did anybody notice that? Do you guys wanting, think that's a great idea and you want to keep it that way? Um, should we make the leveling a little bit easier? Like Jinx was saying, it's, it's if you put a lot of time in and you level up a dragon and then, then they're just gone in a hundred days, right? Um, so is there any, any feedback about battling or digging that some of you guys just trying it out for the first time want to give us? You love digging as is, okay? Leveling to be quicker, okay? Guys, don't hold back. The more feedback you can give us, it's only the better we can get, right?
I honestly think that if you're gonna spend all this time leveling them, that you should be able to, uh, level faster if the cutoff rate is at a hundred. Cause once they become ancient and eternal, they're done. They're retired. You can't do anything with them. They're just, they're looking like pretty ornaments. And at that time, you know, like this dragon right here, I absolutely love this dragon. But once it becomes a hundred, it just becomes like a doorstop, pretty much. There's nothing you can do with them. Just stare at them while they walk on your sim. So I think, you know, just a little bit longer experience and time to just battle them or dig would be fun because, you know, we all have that favorite dragon that we're like, oh man, now there's, it's lame. You can't do nothing but stare at it.
Right, uh, no, I think we totally, uh, understand what you're saying. Now, I do not, I do not believe now, I, I could never say never. We have no plans to make dragons who can no longer breed able to battle or dig. Um, digging is not affected currently by the dragon you wear. So you can dig with any dragon that's over, uh, seven days old or five days old. Um, however, we, we are, excuse me. We are wanting some feedback on, uh, because as you know, when battle, when battling was released, we said, hey, this is a beta. Right? We're gonna make changes. We're gonna figure it out as we kind of go along. We've never done anything like this before. So we are totally open to making how leveling works faster and easier. So you get there sooner. Um, so that you'll be able to, um, use those. Um, now breeding, leveling, battling is completely separate than breeding. So your battling dragon is not going to breed you a battling dragon. That may be something that we look, uh, look at in the future or something to change. However, the way we have it right now, um, that would be an update. So, um, there's some things we can do that has to be done through update. Other things we can do that are say server side where we don't have to necessarily do an update. And I think one of the things that we can do server side is make it how hard it is to get to a certain level. So maybe it's, you know, if you battled your butt off until your dragon was 15, it could be at max level. I don't know what that looks like, but I think that's, um, something that we are looking at. So, um, with that aside, I do want to open up the floor um, for you guys to talk about, anything you want to talk about. Um, let me just set the ground rules. One, we're all gonna be respectful. Two, um, one thing we don't discuss here is pricing. And that is because Mystical Creatures has nothing to do with what you or other individuals like you price, sell, or don't sell their dragons for, okay? Um, and it's not that we don't care. It's not that we don't want a healthy, happy market because it's what everybody wants. However, we don't control that. Like I cannot say, Anna, if you sell a dragon for under 10K, that's it. I'm banning you from dragons forever. Okay? So, um, we're not gonna talk about things like that, but we do want to hear any, any complaints, any praises, any suggestions. If you're new, I want to hear from you. What was your experience like coming into Mystical Creatures? All those, I pick on you because you're a mod and I know it's safe, but so, um, let's, let's discuss, uh, what you guys want to talk about. And you can mic up if you want to mic up. The most dis- dis- Well, I know I'm biased, but I think we have the best looking dragons in all of second life. But like I said, I, I am biased. I mean, even if they didn't breed or do anything, they'd still be the best looking dragons I've seen in second life. You were really confused when you first came into Mystical. You didn't know where to start and you felt overwhelmed. So how did you navigate that? So like what, what did you find? Who did you meet? Where did you end up that kind of made you? Okay, let me, let me figure this out. A friend helped you? And did you find the dragons through your friend? You knew about them when they were beta, but you left SL for a few years. Okay. So let's just see this. Everybody, I want everybody to type in local chat right now. How did you find Mystical Creatures? I'm glad you liked it, Vicky. Mommy, mommy, beta, ever and forever. From your partner. Went to an auction. Like you were cer- you were, you were shopping on a readable sim and oh, there was Mystical Dragons auction. Let me see what this is about. Shopping for something else at 3DI, okay? You're a family member. Friends. You tried them in beta, but it was too much and glitchy, so I gave them. Found again recently, but there's so much for them. Not for you, you would be lost, alright? So most of you guys found dragons through word of mouth, right? Somebody you knew was breeding dragons and was like, hey, you're like, hey, what are you doing? And they're like, oh, I'm over here messing with my dragon. And you're like, dragon? What dragon? And now you have 50. That's how it works. So I want everybody to keep that in mind. When they're talking to people in the group that they don't know, or they're out at a market around people they don't know, or, or things like that, right? Only 50? Well, if you keep it only 50, you're doing better than I could ever do because, um, I'm gonna tell you the last time that I was really, really heavily breeding my full sim and it, there's 20K at the time, right? 20,000 objects. You know, I started out with houses and trees and waterfalls and landscaping and slowly the waterfall went away. Slowly the landscaping went away. Then I was homeless. And then you look around and you're on a flat sim with 18,000 prims of breedables and, and asking yourself how you got there. Houses are overrated, right? Yeah, definitely. That's gonna be you Jade. Alright, I did see Lamia's suggestion. I got that written down. Um, alright, just curious, I wanted to know. So what are, what are some questions you guys have? What are some complaints you guys have? What are some praises you guys have? What are some, I don't know. I know somebody wants to say something. And you feel free to say whatever you want to say here. Like I said, the only rule is we're just gonna keep it respectful. Next design contest. I have an idea on the back burner. Probably be next year, let me. Probably be next year. I hear what you guys are saying. It is completely different than the Frosty. Let me show you. Okay, let me, let me, let me find it here. Here is an example of the Frost Dragon. Did that go in there? There it is. Now you said Frosty? Here is Frosty. Because in the Wiki, it says frost, but you got a frosty skin? I'll have to look at that, Maddie. So give me just a little bit to research that. But that would be the difference in frosty and frost.
Okay, Chelsea's miking up because I said something a few times and I think I'm being overseen. Um, I like to make things with my, my tables, but it takes so many AP points. I'll never be able to get AP dragon if I want to craft also.
Okay. I completely understand. You guys think there should be lower rates for, for crafting with AP. Um, let me, cause I don't know the recipes off the top of my head. However, in case you're like me and you're like, well, what are they talking about crafting? What are blueprints? They are all listed on the wiki, so let's take a look here.
It's like, I made the level five ruin and it took a lot of points.
Right, right. But that also gives you a very big boost, but I'm gonna have to go through here and see how many AP points. Apparently I didn't list AP. New crafted items. Yeah. I'll take a look at that. I mean, that's always something that we can adjust as well. Now you're saying Maddie, you have two dragons that look different and have different names or look the same and have different names? Sorry, I just wanna write that down so I can look into it. Oh, I need to go back and, and address this question. Sorry, one of my teammates just posted it to me. When a dragon sleeps, they consume food slower. Can there be a button to wake all dragons up at the same time? Um, I don't know about a button to wake them all up at the same time. Um, maybe we could do that through the nexus crystal. However, dragons consume no food when they're asleep. They don't eat while they're asleep. Frost. And it says frosty on the stats of the dragon in world. When you click it, it says frosty. Okay. I'm gonna have to look into that one. You guys want the, want to have the ability to make your dragons go to sleep? Okay. Put that down on the list. You can already wake them up. Cause they're always sleepy. I'm confused. To wake up all at the same time. Okay, to wake up all at the same time. Did I miss anybody's question? They have to be, yes, twenty-six percent at least. Lemia. Lemia didn't ask a question. She gave me a suggestion. When a dragon sleeps, they consume food slower. No. When a dragon sleeps, it consumes no food. I have uh, written down on my notes, you'd like to wake them all, all up at one time and you'd like to put them all asleep by one time. At one time. Yes, okay. Did I miss anybody else? Eh, alright, I got, I got you, you on my, my list of suggestions. They want them to sleep so that they can wake them up to use them for battling or digging. They don't want all their dragons to be asleep when they wanna dig or battle. They want someone to still be awake. Yeah, if you birth them around the same time, they're probably, and you use them in the same way, they're probably might fall asleep at the same times. Yeah. Alright. Any questions, any problems anybody's been having? I will tell you, the biggest problem I see time and time again, no matter how many times I've said this, or how many different connections or town hall meetings or in the group or even in a ticket, I have to tell people. If you set your land settings to not have object entry turned on, your dragon's never gonna be able to res its offspring. If you have it set to group and then you have your dragon set to a different group, it's never going to be able to res its offspring. So you could have a dragon out there for a hundred days which bred twenty-six times and never gotten an egg from it. Um, so that's something that you guys have to be diligent with. That uh, know, know what your land settings are and um, and make sure that, and it can even do more than that. I mean, if you have object injury completely turned off, I don't even think the nexus crystal can res the blue orb that's gonna make your dragon grow into a, a bigger dragon. So it can really mess a lot of things up, right? But uh, and if you don't know, guys, um, you can always check out the settings of a market that a ton of people are breeding dragons on. And you can see, alright, this is how new colony has their settings. I wanna set mine this way or, you know, things like that. But yeah, that's the biggest ticket that I see most of the time is my dragon says in recovery and I have no egg, right? And that's, that can be a real letdown, especially if you've been waiting for three days or, you know, two days to get that egg, right? So now that most of you guys have battling dragons, what if we did a big supersized royal rumble and gave you know, like a, a whole bracket system and let's just make a really big deal out of it? Oh, you know what? Lucky, I don't know if TMR's recording this one. I've been trying to get him to record them, but I don't, I didn't say anything to him about it today. He is. Okay, good. Yep, so yeah, you'll be able to watch this later. Any other questions, suggestions, problems, praises? I'll take them all, guys. So for some of you guys who are new to mystical creatures, uh, if you guys have any suggestions on how we can make it easier to break into dragons, I would love to hear from you as well. Thank you, Shellys. Chelsea. I try, I try. I, yes, I do have pictures that I'm going to put up from the parade. Maybe have a big sign over the foods in case breed. Well, we have a whole information area at the landing point of the sim and you literally just walk around and it tells you what every item is for and what it does. Has anybody actually ever walked around that information center that's at the, the landing point? Also, I have a ton of content on YouTube as well. How to breed, how to dig, how to battle, how to play, how to use the HUD. Are you getting started with dragons? Um, and I do plan in the future to have some more of those. I want to do an ancestry video. And I also wanna do a video on how traits actually work. Um, because I think some people have a lot of misconceptions on how traits pass. Sure, Shellys. Chelsea. Chelsea, I'm gonna get it right. DOS Mother of Pearl traits pass. Well, that is a great question and what I wanna do is let's look it up on the wiki and see what it says. It says this is word from word from the wiki. Kinship Mother of Pearl does not pass their skin. Mother of Pearl eye, claws, horn, pigment, and ornament pigments do have the ability to pass. Offspring of the kinship Mother of Pearl must first show the trait to pass the trait. That's what we call show to throw. Does everybody have a good concept on what that means? So they will not pass it into offspring as a hidden trait. So no offspring from the Mother of Pearl. Say I bred a Mother of Pearl and I got a Dayton dude skin. No Mother of Pearl traits. If I breed that Dayton dude skin, it is not going to give me any Mother of Pearl traits. So the offspring's gotta show it and then it can throw it. And guys, that, that it normally works that way for, it's gonna work that way for all the kinship. It works that way for LEs, right? An LE does not pass a new trait as a hidden. It's gotta show it before it can throw it, right? So all of these things kinda work the same way. Now, if I have a dragon from breeding my Mother of Pearl and it's a Dayton dude, but it's got a Mother of Pearl horn pigment and I breed him, can he pass that to his offspring as a hidden? Absolutely. Because the, the daddy showed it first. So now if somebody says show to throw, you guys know exactly what that means. Any other questions, guys?
Okay, so now I, 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 um, so if it's directly from the Mother of Pearl and it's not showing, it won't throw, right?
That, that's correct.
But if her child has it and it has baby and doesn't show, it could still throw?
Yes, because it showed on the parent, right?
Okay.
So it has to be in the lineage in the background to begin with. Somewhere there, you're gonna find a dragon, whether it's one or two or three, however many generations you look back, you're gonna find a parent that has a Mother of Pearl horn pigment that is not the Mother of Pearl dragon.
So all these DOSs I'm saving from the Pharaoh, I can eat?
Not a, not exactly. This is gonna get a little complicated, however, I'm gonna try to make it simple for you. An LE has the ability to pass you whatever's hiding in that LE. So we know the raw skin is hiding in the Pharaoh, right? So we say, okay, if it doesn't give me any offspring with the raw skin, it's not gonna pass a raw skin. However, uh, there are currently things that we released with the two point O update that have yet to be discovered. So that means there are things that nobody else has found that you can still get by breeding two starter dragons together or any starter dragon.
Oh, so don't-
So Yep, so those DOSs coming from the Pharaohs would be considered uh, you know, from two starters. So they could be hiding you the newest Mahavi skin that nobody's ever seen before. But are they going to be hiding anything for the raw skin or the Pharaoh leafage? No, they're not gonna be. Did that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. You have a question? Fifty would be the max level that you can train any dragon to. So that means if we have a rumble, Verilla is gonna be kicking everybody's ass. I'm just saying. We might have to gang up on her. We bring two dragons, she brings one, maybe we can slay her dragon. You have one at forty-one? Alright, Samantha's gonna give her hell then. Can you get a dragon with two or three heads? Not currently. Not currently.
Wait, did I eat two to three times more?
That sounds like the perfect business plan. You own one dragon, it eats five times its weight. Yeah, I was, uh, we, we have some amazing stuff planned, some things that we've been planning since the beginning of dragons that um, we will be implementing. We understand that it's important for you guys to get new stuff. That's why we're always trying to give you new stuff. By the way, I think that the last town hall meeting we had, uh, all of our breeding challenges have been found, correct? If a Pharaoh doesn't pass any raw traits to the first OS, could it pass to another OS? You mean like, I have three eggs from my Pharaoh and the first two didn't give me anything and the third one gives me the skin? Absolutely. It happens that way all the time. I can tell you, some people breed LEs and it's the egg they get on day ninety-nine. That's the amazing surprise. I've seen people, uh, okay, we'll pick on Lynn just cause he's not here. I've seen Lynn sell an LE at an auction I was calling and then two weeks later, somebody got what was hiding in the LE. And they wouldn't even have had the LE if they didn't buy it from Lynn. So. Yeah. Yep, you never know. You never know. First two dragons, you got Shellz, Shellys, Chelsea to start her pod. They drafted chosen. Very cool. Read them until they're ancient. Well, I, I don't know if you, if you're psycho, if you're in charge of, of Shelley, Chelsea, but maybe it was her friend, but they, I don't wanna know what you've been feeding them to be making those tutti fruity flavored fardies.
Chelsea and Mitchy are my baby girls. They're my little daughters and they both have tutti fruity and piney fresh fardies.
Is what it was, piney fresh. I said, don't tell me what you're eating.
Mitchy's tag, it says my mommy feeds me beans so I can fart. Everybody, every auction we go to, everything, they're always talking about their little fardies. It's funny.
Alright, does anybody else have any other questions? Are you ready to hear my big announcement?
I have been waiting to hear your big announcement, so.
So, I'm not gonna tell you guys exactly what. So I'm leaving a big element to surprise. It's gonna be next week, whether it's Monday, whether it's Tuesday. It'll be one of those days, but I know a lot of you guys have been hoarding, especially since we had um, double points day. And a couple of people have, of, of course voiced their opinion. We need some new ascension dragons. Or we need a new ascension dragon. Would you guys agree?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
So I'm not gonna tell you what it is and I'm not gonna tell you what it looks like, but I'm gonna tell you next week, you're gonna have the ability to spend all those AP points. And if you are almost there to the point where you can get an AP dragon, you're gonna wanna work hard over the weekend to get yourself over the hump, cause you're not gonna wanna be behind everybody. Very nice, Lemia. Very nice, Lemia. No sleep this weekend. Well, and you know, if you have eggs in your inventory and you don't necessarily see yourself needing them. Send them to Ascension, get, get the, get the AP for that. Oh. And I went off on a tangent and totally got confused, uh, squirreled by somebody's question. Did everybody see what was new for the breeding challenges? There's gonna be a new ascension dragon. Okay, so here is one. This is pink flare, and this is a demon horn. Okay? And then the second one was. Black leafage? Or was that the one before?
Leaf fish was one before, so they, the ones were. Yeah, the obsidian leaf fish was before that. This is, the new breeding one is the antler.
Piebald.
The pinky. Was it a piebald?
The antler was old, I think. It was a new marking. It was, uh. Lacing charcoal. Is what it was. Yes, the boxes will be, um, up on the main area. There it is. Reading challenges are as, sorry.
No, I was gonna ask about the ascension dragons. How many points minimum do you need to get one? Because of course I'm kinda new, so it's not like I got a whole lot.
Sure, um, so I think currently, yeah, fifty K is what the last ones were at.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm not close, so I'll have to go rob a bank or something.
Uh, let me see. Tolrey skin, yes, those are the ones I'm talking about. Did double AP for firecoat? Yes, it did. Here were the three. So we got, um. Oh, where'd that go? Pink flare. Has anybody seen the pink flare? Anybody, anybody? No? Okay. Well, I better hush before I say something I don't wanna say. Let me just double check here. Yeah, pink flare demon horn, and then. Fruzy and Dayton dude gave the lacing charcoal. There you go. That's what they were. So maybe next town hall meeting, I'll have some new breeding challenges for you guys. Uh, like I said, uh, just from. Demon is pink flare. Demon horn is pink flare. Or pink flare is a demon horn. There you go. Any other questions, guys? I do wanna thank all of you for coming today, as well as. I was just giving the people what they wanted. They wanted pink and they wanted demon. I wanna thank the whole team for being here today. These are the breeding challenges right here. Pink flare was from. Let me look. Sorry, guys. Breeding challenges. Okay, here we go. Pink flare demon horn is from breeding. Tolray with a hysteria lacing. So guys, please keep your eyes out and your ears open for everything mystical creatures. Like us on Facebook. Join our Discord, or check us out on our website. Uh, we try our best to get information out to the masses. Um, but there's always, it seems like somebody who goes, oh, I didn't know. I can't tell you it came from that one yet. Nobody's found it. Thank you, guys. Thank you for all the team. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for participating in the Festival of Flames. I hope that everybody enjoyed it and had a good time. I think the majority of you guys did, and if I can get in a majority, I'm okay with that.